All right, this is the regularly scheduled April 10th, 2014 Town and Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting. And I get a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll make that motion.
Camera makes the motion. Anybody else want to second that?
Sure.
Lisa's second. Is there any further discussion? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so then approval of the minutes. We get December 12th, February 13th, and March 13th. Can I get a motion? Or does anybody want to make any comments about them before we do that? No?
No.
Okay. So, the motion's been made to approve as written?
Correct.
And so who wants to second that? Michael. All right. Any further discussion? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moving on to 76-11, proposed amendments to Satchin's path. Just reintroduce yourself for the tape.
Sure. So, Kevin McGuire, and the House of Citizens Corporation. I'm going to sing us.
All right. We're not all sitting on this.
No, I'm giving.
You're leaving. Okay. So this is the board.
Great. So, after, you know, I think a long but productive conversation. Oh.
Oh, shoot. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I win.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry about that. What happened? Do I have to dial a certain number to get out?
I think I have to dial nine.
Nine. Hello? That didn't seem to work, so.
My phones. Are they Internet phones? I have to dial eight on my phones.
I was dialing them. Wow, this is a better speaker phone.
Yeah.
All right. Is Eleanor not in? Eleanor, you know how to operate this? It's very complicated.
Well, but you won't get a dial tone right away.
At least on my phones.
I think I got it.
That extension is not valid.
Yeah, no kidding. I'm trying to dial somebody else.
Three bucks.
I got it. Thank you. Thank you.
There you go. Hey.
Yeah.
Mr. Marshon?
Hey, Ed. It's Ed.
Hey, Ed.
So, we're all here.
Great.
Hey, Ed.
Doesn't the speaker then point to you?
Is this the speaker in the top?
Anyway, can you hear Ed?
Aye.
Mark, can you hear that? All right, let's go.
Okay, so again, Kevin McGuire. So, and we were just saying that, kind of the recap, long conversation, covered a lot of ground a month ago. Our job was to go back and try and pull that together, pull the conversation together, and I guess tweak slash modify our requested amendment. And that was done, and, you know, about two weeks ago, Andrew had submitted a first draft of what we had anticipated or thought would be close to the amendment number one to the comp permit. Since that time, some comments have come back, and in particular, from Ed Marshon. And so what we have, what I've just been handed out to you, and this was kind of dated in December on last evening, is a revised amendment number one, proposed amendment number one, which incorporates the items that Ed had suggested be included.
Sorry to interrupt, but is that Ed's red line document, or did you just hand something else out?
No. What was handed out to everybody is the red line document with Ed's suggested changes.
And if I could just add there, Kevin and I had a long discussion yesterday afternoon. We discussed some of my comments, questions, requests for clarification, and then Kevin did that red line.
Got it.
And sent it back to me, and I forwarded it to Ed and Leslie and Eleanor.
Okay. Just one minute.
Well, I'm not, I, it's not a final red line that I prepared, it's one that Kevin, Kevin prepared.
Got it.
And generally, it's accurate, it reflects the discussion we had, but there are some items in there that are not by decision, and Kevin understands that the board is going to weigh in on those.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So, so Ed, you know, in talking, I think HAC is, you know, completely amenable to the changes as we discussed, and as best I tried to capture within that document, you know, I think the one item that I didn't get to filling in is the question about how could we treat fee such that we could create some working capital for the development, and that's a part of the separate handout, which I have given to everybody. So the handouts that I just gave are, in case there's a clarification on the open space parcels, which is one of the conditions, it gets confusing because it references a lot of the parcels, I just wanted everyone to be clear on where those parcels are. The second was a proposal on the fee such that that would give us an ax, some access to funds for eligible costs if so approved, and it suggested that the ZBA or designee be the person that would determine whether or not it was an appropriate expense. And the third item is a suggested clarification on the infrastructure. I think we definitely agreed last time that if we're going to do a phase one, we want to do 100% of phase one and not a lesser scope, and I just, there's some sequencing within that between structures, infrastructure, first unit, last unit, build permit versus C of O, and so I tried to hand, the other handout is kind of a clarification or suggestion on the way that that would be codified. So Ed, you know, I, as far as, you know, how we go through the issues, we're open to it.
Yeah. Why don't I, the board members have just seen this red line thing. It's pretty clear, so why don't we just go through it page by page, which is going to be relatively quick until we get to those few items that are up for grabs. So, as Ed Marshon said, this document came out of a conversation with Kevin after we got Andrew's initial crack at it. So, on page one, just, you know, the, a lot of these are not nitpicky, but just sort of cleaning up some stuff, i.e. the title is different, it's amendment one to comprehensive permit, blah, blah, blah. I don't think there's anything in one background of amendment request other than some minor changes to wording that we need to discuss. So, moving on.
Those are all exactly that way. There's some fill in the blanks there, and more definitive definitions. Forty B changes are either substantial or insubstantial, but I don't think there's anything substantive on page one.
Right. And I think that's pretty much true on page two. There are just a couple of minor additions, but nothing really subsents it there.
Right. It was important to note the date of the tri-party agreement between the housing authority, the applicant, which is HAC, and the limited liability company that's being formed to do the project. So, that plugged in. And as I mentioned to Ed, the Nantucket Housing Authority retained, I think, an attorney who did a pretty good job in terms of drafting that development agreement. So I think that should, as I said before, that should give some comfort to the board in terms of the interest of the town and the housing authority.
Okay.
And if I might be able to add for Ed, Renee Sealy from the housing authority's here, but we also communicated with their attorney yesterday and last night, so everything that you're looking at, he's looked at as well, and has been talking to Renee about it.
Okay. If he had any comment, let me know. Not yet?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Okay, so page three, again, pretty much, well, the one change is to paragraph four, well, there are other changes, but it's just saying that what we're doing is shifting some of the approval process in terms of monitoring the number of, well, the regulatory, monitoring the regulatory documents, I believe, on the buildings that are above 110%. And now, it's not only the Town of Nantucket, it's going to include the Nantucket Housing Authority and the CPC.
And let me just try to explain that. The applicant says it's going to use the standard documents, and those are primarily the deed rider, and the deed rider defines the terms of occupancy and resale, and it places resale restrictions on those units. My understanding is that those eight documents will be used, and you really, they're pretty much cast in concrete, you don't get to change those. However, for the higher-priced units, the applicant is going to draft its own documents, and prior to this, it just said that they would be drafted in consultation and with the approval of the Town of Nantucket. I don't think the ZBA is looking for additional work, and the people who really have a stake in that are the housing authority and the preservation commission because they're providing those significant dollars. So that's why that change was made.
Okay. Everybody clear on that one?
No.
So, five, six, don't really, seven, there's not much to talk about, those are all minor changes. So then we get to eight. And eight, in essence, in essence seems to, if I'm reading this correctly, let me reread it. Yeah. The applicant would like to have access to some portion, do you want to talk about this, or do you want me to summarize it?
Yeah, well, let me take a shot, Ed.
Go ahead.
To the extent that we've earned fee, which means that we've built and sold units, because fee is essentially funded by sales proceeds, so this is not until we've successfully completed some units. We earn fee, and it is not sent to us as, you know, good job, it's put aside, and it's actually retained until the end of the project, which was the, which is the way that the original comprehensive permit had been written. And what we're requesting is that, to the extent that there, that we have some development needs, and I think last time I had talked about, we're looking at a pre-development loan, a source to pay that pre-development loan off will be the closing of all the units, so we'll pay some of it off when we close on phase one units. We would love to be able to pay that off as soon as possible because that lessens the cost of the project, saves interest, and that the fee from, say, the first or second home sale would be enough for us to be able to retire that pre-development loan. So for us, as, from a working capital issue, as a way to keep private costs down, we would then request, can we use X amount for this purpose out of earned fee? There may be other items, other development, oftentimes in development, when you're in a regulated project, you have a fixed amount from the state, you have a fixed amount from your lender, and, you know, you have to make things happen, and so that could be another case where we would be looking perhaps to use our fee upon approval to really keep the development going and getting it done. That's how it's, again, that's how development fee is often used by developers. So it's retaining a little bit of access to be able to use money that's being held back for the completion of the project, for the betterment and for the betterment of the project. That's the intent.
And how we propose to try to fill in the blank line with a handout that, one of the handouts that Kevin gave you, in effect spells out what he just said, and we could fill in the blank line by saying, see attached, and just attach that to the modifications.
All right. Just to remind everybody, the original agreement was no fee released until the end of the project, and I think that we were pretty consistent with that thought in terms of just wanting to be clear that, you know, the project got finished, there's your fee, because we had some uncomfortable feelings about that. So, how does everybody feel about the particular issue of releasing the, a portion or some portions of the fee as they are quote unquote collected? I mean, in essence, if I'm thinking about this correctly, I mean, oftentimes in a development, the quote unquote profit, you don't realize until the very end of the project. I mean, you've sold the last two houses, and that is your money. So, you don't have access, what you're saying, I think, is you want to have access to some of that profit beforehand.
Specifically for use in the project, to the extent that we need it for a use that people agree benefits the project. So, in no means is this trying not for us to take it, you know, off the island, with the analogy we used before.
Right. Because the pro forma does have quite a bit of line items, or several line items for consultation, clerk of the works, this, that, and the other thing.
Yeah.
So, there is some built in, not wiggle room, but certainly, go ahead.
Who would make that decision at the end of phase one?
And again, this is an important clarification that I think Ed suggested. I think, as I initially contemplated it, probably not surprisingly, it was, boy, when we finish phase one, maybe we can get some phase one fee that we can actually realize. We've scratched that concept. So, all fee stays in until the end of the, you know, 40th unit, 36th, 40th unit, but for these requests that we make. So, we're not taking anything out of that escrow unless it's approved, and we suggested that it be, you know, the board or a designee of the board.
So, just as an example, would that be to pay some bills that were left over from phase one, or would that be to go into phase two and base for some infrastructure?
I mean, these are the potential uses. You're exactly right.
Okay.
You know, I guess the two instances would be really, other than the specific example that I know of that I referenced, if we have cost overruns and we need to get the job done, that would be one. And the second would be if we think that we can expedite, that would be two. The expediting would obviously, would probably require bigger chunks of that to be released. But again, these would be written requests that come in, and it's, you know, kind of yea or nay.
If I could add a couple things.
Go ahead.
In a portable housing, when you do a pro forma, there's a line item for it to be an overhead, and some people look at that and say, oh, you're going to get a profit, you're going to make a profit on this job. This job works like any other conventional job. If you can sell the units for more than it costs you to build them, you make a profit. So there's no guaranteed profit in this. So I just want you to sort of keep that in mind. The construction lender will also have some conditions in terms of maintaining either an escrow or potential change orders, and that's to be negotiated. We saw the draft, the draft listing of conditions, and I know that the applicant and I discussed this, and they're going to try to negotiate with the lender. So, these are all related. I think the point that's important is, to the degree any funds are released, they have to be released for project-related expenses, and they don't go to HAC to use for some of their other programs.
Well, yeah, I think that's a given, and I think the applicant is fine with that, and that would be the absolute minimum. I mean, I might want to at least contemplate restricting the use of any, because as I said, there may be no profit on this project. So if we release all of the project, not all of it, you know, profit as we go along, and at the end, the housing market takes a downturn, and those units have to be sold for either cost or, God forbid, under cost, you know, there would be no profit, and I would, you know, then we're looking at an ugly situation. So, that, I think, was part of the reasoning for not wanting to release any of it. If the, if we're talking specifically about something like a development loan, a pre-development loan to get off the mark, and that's a predefined amount, but otherwise, I mean, in essence, there really, there is a profit on each individual unit, arguably, hopefully, but there might be a time when there is no profit on an individual unit because, as Ed said, costs escalate, prices go down, and so we could be caught in a place where we don't want to be caught. So that would be my concern with.
Doing it individually, with every sale?
Well, doing it at all, frankly, because I don't want to be getting a request every, or the new chairwoman doesn't want to get a request every.
Susan?
Every couple of weeks, asking for money, you know, that I won't.
Yeah, I agree.
I won't have any real knowledge of whether or not it's fair or not.
Legitimate, yeah.
So, you know, I would do my best, but that's difficult. So, I mean, I, what is the size of the pre-development loan?
Two hundred thousand. So we think, you know, if you do, 15 out of 36 is about 40, 40% around numbers. So, when we begin phase one, we'll be able to pay off 40% of 200,000, which will leave a little bit over 100,000. And so when we, depending on what the sale price is, the fee changes, but, you know, if you think about the fee as being roughly 30,000 a unit, I think it's between 30 and 50, depending if it's an 80 or 150, that, you know, would take two or three, three or four units to be able to pay off the balance of the loan. So, you know, again, this isn't, this is just an attempt to introduce the ability to, I guess, have a dialogue in the case we run into.
Well, you'd always be able to come back and have a dialogue. You want to build the dialogue in now. Are there mechanisms?
That's right.
An easier mechanism than this one.
I'm happy however, you know, however you want to safeguard it. I think it's just, you know, if you want to cap it, you know, 25% of fee after, you know, there's all kinds of, there's all kinds of ways you can get into it. You know, we're happy with that. We just, again.
Well, the easy one.
I know of 120 that I think we're going to like to use. Beyond that, I don't know. And if, and if we are using it, then we need to use it in big quantities, there are bigger issues.
I was going to say, yeah, probably bigger issues. I mean, the easy solution is to say, let's leave it as it was, no fee till the end, but I'm certainly open to some suggestion in terms of percentages, or specifically to pay down the pre-development loan, and once that's done, but I don't know if we're going to get to that solution today, but let's try it.
Just to refresh my memory, the only speculation here is going to be on model home?
There's the model home, that's right, which is not sourced.
Two model homes, right?
Of the two model homes, that's correct. That's right.
Okay, and then everything's billed to suit with the buyer.
Again, right. I mean, everything's kind of delivered as a product. You know, again, the prices are set, we can't sell above our pro forma number, we try and sell at the pro forma number, if, you know, if we can't get people, then presumably we sell, we're trying to reduce until we hit that market point, or try and get more subsidy to be able to accomplish that. Again, as the project is being structured now, the 80s and 110s are fully funded, because the state money comes in and makes them fully funded and not dependent on the sale of 150% units.
Bill, sorry to interrupt, so, but on the 80 to 100, they're fully funded, so arguably the profit is fully funded on those houses?
Yes.
I mean, we could potentially tie it to those, yeah.
If you can produce it for the budget that you have.
That's right. That's right. So, you know, again, we sell, we sell a unit, there's going to be a settlement statement, there's going to be closing, you know, there's going to be a mortgage coming in that's going to be used to pay off certain things, and typically, one of those items is developer fee. That's dependent on where our costs are relative to, you know, where the loan is, and whatever that number is, whether it's pro forma or less, because, you know, we've had to overdraw, that amount then is released, okay? It needs to be released. You can't essentially keep it in the project because the sales proceeds are coming in, and the balance is out, which is a payment that you need to go somewhere. And so this is that idea of, okay, there's an escrow account, it goes there, so it's easy to wire there, right off the settlement statement, and that becomes just the fee. And then, you know, to the extent that, you know, we would then, again, so presumably then on the fourth unit, we would come to you and say, you know, we'd like to form a request to release of 120,000, which will allow us to pay off our pre-development loan. Otherwise, you know, the interest that will be saved will be X amount, you know, let us know.
What do you think? I mean, I don't, I don't like the thought of releasing 100% of the collective escrow. You're saying, in your example, after four units, $30,000 a pop, and you make the request for 120, I mean, I, that might be problematic.
If it's 50%, you know, then it's a, the other thing that's important is the lender, the lender we're going to is looking at this too, right? Because this would be their source of payoff. And so, you know, it's nice for us to be able to point to, look, here's a mechanism by which we're going to pay you off. You know, normally they say, oh, okay, you're going to realize fee, you know, that's a source. In this case, it's restricted. You know, if you want to say 25%, then it's just more units, it's a little bit more interest. That's fine. I mean, there's, there's a clear path. Say 50% fewer units.
Okay. Any thoughts on this one?
Clearly, I'm not in favor of releasing all $30,000 per unit when four units are sold. I just think that doesn't give, give us any protective devices in place. We get down to the 25% number, I might be happier about it, but that's just me personally thinking about what we've already talked about doing and what they're asking us to do now as an amendment.
Yeah.
I agree with Mark.
So 25%? You can ask for 25%. It's not released. You still have to go through the mechanism of asking.
Absolutely. And who are they asking?
I guess I'd be the lucky winner.
Well, you wouldn't be acting alone. Wouldn't the lender be involved and Renee in this?
The more the merrier. I don't know what the lender would be.
I mean, functionally, what's going to happen is, I think, people are just looking at us to get the job done, right? And we're trying to get it done at the least cost possible. So, you know, again, if we're bringing the lender in, there are a lot of bigger things going on. So, you know, we did suggest, you know, again, it's, you know, the agent for the ZBA is the building inspector, you know, probably don't want that person, so we're thinking, is it your designee? So, does it go into Eleanor, or does it go into?
And so, you know, it's nice for us to be able to point to, look, here's a mechanism by which we're gonna pay you off. You know, normally they'd say, oh, okay, you're gonna realize fee, you know, that's a source. In this case, it's restricted. You know, if you want to say twenty-five percent, then it's just more units, it's a little bit more interest. That's fine. I mean, there's a clear path. Say fifty percent fewer units.
Okay. Any thoughts on this one?
Clearly, I'm not in favor of releasing all thirty thousand dollars per unit. When four units are sold, I just think that doesn't give, give us any protective devices in place. We get down to the twenty-five percent number, I might be happier about it. But that's just me personally thinking about what we've already talked about doing and what they're asking us to do now as an amendment.
Yeah, I mean, I...
I agree with Mark.
So twenty-five percent? You can ask for twenty-five percent, it's not released. You still have to go through the mechanism of asking.
Absolutely.
After four years?
And who are they asking?
I guess I'd be the lucky winner.
Well, you wouldn't be acting alone. Wouldn't the lender be involved and Renee in this?
The more the merrier. I don't know what the lender would be...
I mean, functionally, what's gonna happen is, I think, people are just looking at us to get the job done, right? And we're trying to get it done at the least cost possible. So, you know, again, if we're bringing the lender in, there are a lot of bigger things going on. So, you know, we did suggest, you know, again, it's, you know, the agent for these ZBA is the building inspector. You know, probably don't want that person, so we're thinking, is it your designate? So, does it go into Eleanor, or does it go into Leslie, and they can, you know... However, we're open to whatever.
I think, I think it would be, unfortunately, the chairman or his designate potentially add, as long as it's continuing to be funded, you know, on a piece-to-piece basis. I don't think we're going to abdicate that responsibility to either the building department or...
We, we have, again, twenty-five percent would be great. I don't think, you know, beyond this initial thing, twenty-five percent, you know, gives us... We're not gonna be, you know, purely trying to pull money.
You know, it could be, it could be that, sorry to interrupt again, that Renee's organization is involved too in that. Okay, Ed, you know, I mean, they, blah, 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 I mean, at least I can get some feedback and...
Sure, tell the project, go.
Or it could be the whole board. I mean, we can do it, we meet every month. It's not like, why don't we just make it the board?
How, how, you know, what kind of timeframe will we have to turn around the request?
Yeah, I wrote it in days just because...
Well, we...
That would be, we don't...
That's fungible.
Yeah, because of the, if it comes to the board?
It's, you know, it's, you know, there's lots of legal language you can put in, whatever's reasonable.
Does that have to be done in a public meeting?
Does that have to be done, would something like that have to be done in a public meeting, Ed, you think?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I'd like to think it would not have to be done in a public meeting, that the board votes to authorize you to, you or your designate, to take action on it.
I wouldn't mind having it be, though, sort of the whole board, at least getting some input instead of it just being me or a designate. I mean, even you, Ed, I mean, you would not...
I would not want to act independently. If you're gonna do that, then you're gonna build it at least thirty days, I would say.
Yeah.
That's fine. Again, we're, you know, if it's thirty, if that works, great. You know, you know, we could even say X amount of time from the next hearing date or next ZBA meeting date.
Yeah, I think that would...
Probably be a better idea.
I think that's a better idea than putting a...
Different that when the request comes in, it could be over thirty days.
And it doesn't need to be a majority of the sitting board, it just needs, I mean...
Does it have to be the board that's sitting on this amendment to the special permit?
Doesn't have to be, but in an ideal world, we'd be the ones discussing it. I mean, the board might change in June. Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. The planning board, when they're releasing escrow, they do vote on it at a public meeting, not a, not a hearing. And it's just a majority of the board members who are sitting there at the time. So I think it might be good just to build that language in so everyone knows that that's the expectation going forward.
That's great.
I didn't hear Leslie, but I think what she, she just confirmed, it would be impossible to have a requirement that the original members act on future actions. Just whoever is there at the time.
Put a majority of them sitting at a...
Right, in essence, that's sort of what she said, part of what she said. But that, that's good enough, I think, for us.
So we're saying twenty-five percent maximum?
Twenty-five percent within ten days of the next regularly scheduled ZBA meeting after the request. Somebody could craft that a little better.
Yeah, fifteen days, this is gonna be made fifteen days after.
But I would say as a guidance thought, this is redevelop, pre-development loan paydown would probably be, you know, I know that's not necessarily the only thing you're presenting as a possibility, but...
No, I understand, I understand. And again, this, just as you said, this is, you're right, I'm building in a mechanism that allows this to be discussed, and we've capped at a point that, you know, seventy-five percent of accumulated fee is being held until we're cost certified at the very end of the day.
Just help me out here, because I'm not a hundred percent certain how this works. You present the pro forma to the state, and those numbers, those sales numbers are locked in. You cannot sell for over that number?
That's, that's right.
But you could sell for what? Let's say your costs come in, I think this is what happened with Cliff out in Abrams Quarry. I think his numbers turned out to be less than he anticipated on the, on the construction side, so he sold for less. I mean, is that potentially a goal of the organization?
So what happens in that case is, that's not done on a unit-by-unit basis, because you have a bigger construction contract, with a bigger loan agreement with the state for funds as they come in. But generally, what happens is, cost savings, there's a provision within the loan documents that normally says fifty percent of any cost savings goes back to the state for the various entities that put the subsidy in, and the other fifty percent comes to the applicant, to the developer. That's typically the way the language reads.
That's a big incentive for cost savings.
It is, you know, I...
But I mean, why wouldn't, I'm just curious, if you're, if you're in the business of affordable housing, why wouldn't that cost savings bring the, bring the cost of the... I mean, you're allowed to sell for less than the pro forma number.
Yeah, presumably, right. I mean, again, the state is looking, just as the CDC is looking to, but, you know, only enough to make the development feasible, and so they wanted to see, you know, maximum of other sources. So I don't think anybody, I can't imagine someone going in and getting approved that suggested that they're gonna price underneath what the formula is that the state gives you to calculate these costs.
So the state gives you a formula to calculate the cost of construction, for instance?
They, no, only of sale price. And it's essentially, it is based upon meeting income, published meeting income, so whatever percent of particular tier is, interest rates at the time. You basically figure out what can someone afford as a mortgage payment, and then what could that mortgage payment support in a loan and a mortgage, and with a five percent down payment, that's your sale price.
And these numbers will actually be adjusted because it's gonna be a long period to do both phase one and phase two. So, right at the point when you're ready to sell something, you take another look at where interest rates are at, if there's been any change in the tax rate in Nantucket, if you've taken a look at what the condo budget might be, and income limits. For example, income limits are actually decreased for some categories from fiscal year thirteen to fiscal year fourteen. So that's formula-driven. And the subsidizing agency, Mass Housing, as part of that final approval that we've talked about, they'll be taking a look at those numbers again. And the applicant doesn't have much to say about that. I should add, on some projects where there's significant public subsidy going into a project, that there have been provisions that say, if there are cost savings, then those cost savings should go into project improvements. For example, you can always spend more money on landscaping, or you could set up some kind of a reserve fund for the association.
Yeah, that seems like a reasonable request, a thought, to me.
I agree.
Are you good with that?
Absolutely. My experience is, you want to put every dollar into the project that we can. Particularly with ownership, where people are self-managing, you know, it's what, what's it like in five years or ten years? So you want to get as much...
What data condition that says that, to the degree any incentive payments or cost savings result? That they will be used for project-related improvements or reserves?
Okay, that, we're good? Everybody in agreement with that one?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it just, so the nuts and bolts of that, if we, for the consensus, well, the twenty-five percent with everything you talked about in the condition you just said, if you look at page four, where we're talking about top number eight, where the bold language...
Yeah.
If we change the until blank line to say, accept as on the attached, Kevin can revise the attachment to reflect everything we just discussed in the condition, and we could just, that language, you can just say that, and then that would be reflected in the language. And that would be what we'd see there for that number eight.
Andrew, are you suggesting that that takes care of the savings going back into the project? I don't think we want to mix those two up.
Okay, well, we, I'm gonna need to flip back. Yeah, you're right, that's a finding section, Ed, so what you probably want to do is, say, accept as attached, as I said. Do the twenty-five percent part on that with the rules that talk about, and we can add a new condition later on, like a condition thirty-three, I think. So I think we're up to thirty-two now.
That would be cleaner. And I hate to bring this up, but Kevin, you and I talked about development overhead, and we said the standard in the industry very often is that half of the development being overhead goes to, overhead and half goes to B, conceptually. The, the agreement talked about using development overhead for reasonable and certifiable development overhead costs. That's what this says, but it says, as agreed and approved by the project lenders. And I just want to raise, once you put that in there, I'm not sure if the ZBA has any say in terms of development of overhead expenses.
Well, is the intention to say that those numbers were approved?
Yeah, essentially, that's right.
So that language needs to be changed, if I'm hearing it correctly?
I think you want to, there's a lot of money in there. I mean, if you take a look at the budget, there are, as Ed mentioned, there are a number of line items in this budget that address overhead issues. So, I, I don't think the board has issues with releasing those funds for project-related expenses, but they just want to make sure they're, as we said in the original agreement, that they're, you know, legitimate overhead expenses. The actual terms that were used, reasonable and certifiable development overhead costs. So I don't think you're asking for anything new, it's just that this says the lender gets to make that decision.
And so, you know, we're happy to take that, I'm not trying to complicate this, believe me. If that should get scratched, that's fine.
Okay.
So we could just stop...
Oh, that's, up to the board.
Yeah, I think...
We could just stop it after it's a house-by-house basis, is I think what you're saying?
Yes, yeah.
That's okay with the board.
I mean, this board's been very reasonable, they understand the realities of it, and if you can demonstrate to their satisfaction that there's reasonable overhead expense, then my guess is they'll approve it.
But again, I'm just giving some further guidance. I think it's really for loan retirement is what we're talking about.
That's right, that's exactly right. And if there's another situation, it's probably gonna be because there's bigger issues.
Right, we'll talk about that then.
In which you'd want to be part of the conversation.
Okay, I, I think we're good with some change to the language, some addition that we just reviewed, but I don't think it needs further discussion. We good with that, twenty-five percent? Has to come to the board fifteen days afterward, blah, blah, blah? Yeah? Okay, so let's keep moving. Okay, so in number three, page eight, section, whatever, like I said, I broke my glasses, so I'm struggling with that here, but...
I'm gonna hold the paper over here, please?
No, I got it. I just gotta look at it right up in one eye. Okay, this, this redlined area is some language that was put in through Ed and Kevin's discussion. It's basically saying you gotta meet the requirement of twenty-five percent. But, but then there's the, there's this issue about, about Habitat, because you've always presented the project as you were gonna do eight of these, eighty to hundred and tens, and Habitat was going to do four. So I...
Eight of the, up to eighty percent.
Oh, okay.
The eighty percent, which is the statutory requirement.
Right.
It's up to twenty-five percent of the forty or ten of those units, and Hack is, is talking about doing eight of them, which meant Habitat would have to do at least two more to meet the statutory requirement.
Right.
Split between the phases.
As it played out, there's one Habitat in phase one. But I think what Ed has done here is put some real teeth to make sure that, for the development view, we have the housing industry, we're ultimately responsible. We can't say, well, you know, Habitat didn't know what they were doing, it's on us to make sure we do it right.
Right, this is the concern, yeah.
And so that's codified. And this is saying that, you know, let's not wait till the end of the project and all of a sudden say, well, once Habitat can finish, start on that unit. Hopefully, this won't be the case, they're looking for land. But in the event that we're, so this is, in phase two, you can only get so far before you have at least two of those other eighty percent units going, because we don't want to end up at the end of the day, and you gotta figure out how you're gonna do that, Ed, because we don't want to get to the end of the day where you're built out and we don't have twenty-five percent of forty units at eighty percent.
Right, I, I would like to add a little more teeth to it, and it's not just a function of Habitat starting construction, they have to be finished. They have to have a C O.
Yep, that's fine, you know, again, I like this because it gives us the ability to go to Habitat and say, you guys, let me get going, or else, you know...
You better get going and get finished.
Exactly.
Because those projects can take a long time. I'm not dissing anybody, but it can take a long time, you have to get it done.
And my only sensitivity is, in phase one, there's a unit that makes perfect sense. We're in phase two, we're in the middle of units. But again, you know, if that's what the language is...
It's gonna give everybody an incentive to get it done.
I hear it, I think that's good.
So if, if, if all the workers have to go volunteer for a few days, so be it.
You have a lot of hack volunteers to get that big bill.
So it has, they have to be completed with C Os.
Sorry, so you're changing in that, where it says Habitat have not begun construction, deleting begun construction, and saying have not been completed and received C Os.
That's what I wrote, but I'm not saying that's the most eloquent, but yes, something to that effect.
So the building permit, the occupancy...
Unless anybody has an issue with that. Karen, no, Mark?
You know, that would be shit, just the end of the session.
All right, I got, I got another little slight issue here. Karen is not, must have, you must have missed several of these meetings.
You know, I was just, you're not listed on the signature page or on the front page?
We missed the last meeting in March, and we may not have been here in January, I can't remember.
So if you missed two...
He said, but he can't, I'm not sure if he can vote.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just clearing it up.
I'm just pointing it out just to make sure that the decision was correct.
Because the decision, you know, has four, it's four signature, and Karen's not on it.
Well, this is, as a, as a, and we discussed this before, we knew there were four of you when we started March. For this type of a vote, it's a majority vote of the forum sitting. So with the four of you, you four who were here last time, three of you, at least three of you, would have to be...
All right, I'm just, there's no, I just don't want there to be some regulatory issue here, no, okay. I brought it up, we're good.
Great.
Thanks, Lisa. Okay, so the rest of page four seems fine, and, you know, there's a couple other minor things that have been inserted, but I don't think there are any we need to discuss. So then you get down to page five, number seven, page ten, section, whatever, condition seven.
And this is the other, so this is phase one infrastructure, and how do we clarify? So I've tried to add a little bit of detail in a chart form as opposed to in a written form as far as the way the infrastructure and the dwelling units get done. Functionally, the infrastructure will begin before the dwellings, but it will not be completed before the dwellings start.
Okay, just right off the bat, that was not my recollection at all.
Not mine either.
My, my recollection was all the infrastructure is in.
Other than the last top coat.
Other than the last top coat, then you get your building permits, and then you get, start building. Not, that, that was 100% my recollection.
I thought actually you started the meeting off today by saying that. Maybe I misunderstood you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This may be a misunderstanding. So the, I know the concern was that when the phase one infrastructure is done, that it is 100% done. There was $240,000 of items that we were saying we were going to defer. And, and, you know, to have a phase one, you know, I think more particulars, look, we've got to have this in. We agree with that. I have to be honest, my understanding wasn't that we can't start, you can't start dwelling units until that's done. But this is why we need to discuss it.
Definitely my, my.
This is what you and I discussed, and I said, I wasn't sure that the, the board's conclusion coincided with yours when we talked about this yesterday.
Is there an issue with this approach? I mean, it, it does say that the infrastructure has to be complete by the CFO of the first unit.
No, I, I think what it says is the infrastructure to that lot has to be.
No, I thought it said to the, um, serving the.
Serving.
Well, I took it to mean that the, that the road of, yeah, whether or not it's just to that specific lot, I thought it meant.
The way, the way it's written, it was trying to be very flexible. Okay, thinking that these were going on like a lot of subdivisions when they're built.
Right.
Um, so that language is, is further from what you're.
Final phase one.
From what you're interpreting.
100%, but I thought that they were going to get to the, I thought they were going to get to that phase.
Final phase one, yeah.
Yeah. We did, we did allow them to break into two phases.
Right, right.
And then, but I thought, and then we talked about not having to do the final top code until the, each phase was complete.
That, that was my recollection, but it was putting it all in, then you start building. Not start building when there's still roadwork going on, when there's, you know, heavy equipment rolling through the site, when somebody arguably could move in, and none of that would be completed until, I can't remember how many units were in phase one, until that 15th unit was. I would not want to be unit one.
Well, what I'm saying is, why can't they, why do you need to have all that in place to get your first building permit? I'm saying, why can't that be at the completion of unit one? So that when unit one is occupiable, then all the infrastructure is in.
But unit one will be a model home.
Well.
I don't know.
I, I.
I think that's what you're trying to say.
No, no.
I was actually trying to be more aggressive.
You're trying to be more flexible.
More flexible.
Like all 15, right?
But, but, you know, we certainly like that, because again, it just allows us to start structures quicker. But again, look, the phasing is what's important to us. It's whatever, whatever you want to place it.
Well, I think we agreed last time to the phasing.
Yeah.
After some arm wrestling.
Yeah.
And now this, this is, you know, substantially different than what I.
And here is my mistake, is when we were talking about phase one infrastructure, we were talking about phase one, and I guess in my mind, just the way the funding's happening, I was separating phase one infrastructure from phase one structures. That obviously was a misinterpretation on my side. So we will correct this language.
All right, then, is it, you good with that, Ed?
Yes.
Okay, then there was the further issue of even starting that infrastructure, um, when you only had the commitment letter. In other words, I believe we did agree to that and back, back off that you had to have final approval. But, so all, I think we would like to contemplate the notion of, we want to see the commitment letter. We want to, um, basically approve it. It's, in other words, the commitment letter could say something that we don't agree with.
And specifically.
The language, Kevin, when you, when you did the redline, we had discussed that commitment letter, you know, acceptable to the ZBA. And again, the question was, well, the ZBA, my guess is the ZBA will get it. They'll give me a call, certainly I'm funded, and they'll say, does this make sense? If you didn't, you said you needed a commitment letter, but you, I think you said, we just give a copy to the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
The ZBA wants to make sure that the commitment letter is, is real and consistent with the intent in the pro forma, that that will plus the remaining funding gap.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay, so you'll change that language?
Yeah.
Is everybody good with that?
Yes, copy the commitment letters to be submitted to be due October. Um, and I reference the zoning enforcement officer, it should actually be the zoning board.
Right.
Go ahead.
We're going to wait till phase two is complete and then put the final code on the entire project.
I thought we were going to do the final code onto phase one after phase one was completed.
Yeah, okay. Then I'm fine.
And I think, and that's how this would.
And what, we don't, when it comes to phase two, uh, where does the final code?
I think it's the same pattern.
Same pattern.
Okay, so where's the collateral for the final code?
Good point.
Well, I mean, except for, there's a, typically a bond that you're posed.
I saw one for 50,000 for.
Landscape.
The landscape.
The landscape.
And their fee hasn't been issued, right, at that point?
That's right, I mean, this is.
The collateral.
You don't have 75% of the fee.
That's fine.
Of course, if there is no fee because it doesn't work, but then they wouldn't have the money to do it anyway.
Right.
And that is going to be, hopefully, you know, again, and that's not our hope. And we hope the thing is that we're down to a success, so we just want to feel comfortable.
Well, I understand.
So we're. That language, that sentence, Michael, where you were getting to the lap on page 86, the last sentence of the bolded.
Yeah.
Is the laying of the final code for the road of any station completed prior to the issue of the CO, the last dwelling in phase, that gets exactly what the top of the line.
What number is that?
Oh, it was the top of, um, page six.
Page six in the yellow.
Last sentence in that bolded language.
We should probably add some language that somehow ties all of these types of conditions, if you will, or schedules to, to phase two, too. In other words, you have to get all of phase two infrastructure in before phase two starts. Just like you had to get all of the infrastructure in on phase one.
Wouldn't that be its provision to get a building permit anyway? You have to have your infrastructure in. Not if we don't say they do.
I would hope, but.
It makes sense to put it in.
Just, yeah, let's just put it in. I, I don't disagree with you, but yeah.
But now, just to clarify, when you say all the infrastructure, phase one and phase two respectively, it's all except the top code?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is then covered by that other sentence.
So for, yeah, okay.
Okay.
No problem.
Good.
Yeah.
All right, so.
So under no condition would there not be enough fee left to do the top code?
Well.
There is, unless there is an effect.
Yeah.
Right.
If there's no fit.
Well, remember, the funding from CPC.
Yes.
For infrastructure, so they should withhold some of, you know.
What's that?
Includes the top, the finish code.
The CPC fund.
So CPC should just withhold X dollars. Have your sound engineer estimate what that finish code is or get a number. And you could deal with it that way if you wanted to.
Well, we can make that suggestion to CPC, but we don't control CPC, so. But it's a good suggestion, so if they are thinking straight, they would want to do the same thing, so. All right, so let's keep moving. Eight is good. I mean, the rest of page six looks good. Page seven, a couple minor things, then we get down to page, uh, number 10, condition 22.
So this is the collateral language we talked about, and this specifically ties up to the resource.
Yeah.
As opposed to the various synergies, what we talked about, what we proposed.
So Ed, are you good with that language?
Yes, I think that reflects what you said. You said, the only, the construction lender, uh, the only security that the construction lender will be on the subject lot that it's making a loan on.
Right.
As I mentioned to Kevin yesterday, the lender's also going to ask for protection in terms of easement so that that lot can be accessed. But that's an act issue to work that out satisfied the lender.
Yep, I'm good with not getting into that. Everybody okay with that one?
Yeah.
I think it reflects what we said. Okay, so page eight, there's nothing until condition 31. Little bit of language change up top, and then, um, this talks about the infrastructure being, the, the infrastructure can start before final approval, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And then I think we just want to put in, uh, a little bit more language about, again, that commitment letter being approved by the ZBA.
Yeah, so it shouldn't, that's right.
So references the condition.
We're not in care of repeating the language.
Yeah, refers back to condition seven.
The commitment letter has to be applicable to the ZBA.
I just put it in again instead of referencing back, because who knows what we're referencing exactly? And then the only other addition that Ed made was on page nine, just to hammer home the point that all of the terms and conditions of the comprehensive permit date September 13, 2012, shall remain in full effect, blah, blah, blah. So.
Plus, we've now added a condition 33.
Yeah.
From earlier. Uh, if there are cost savings that can be used for the volume cost reserves.
Right, add condition 33.
Can someone just clarify the main.
Sure, go ahead.
How that relates to my dream of the 15% excess at the end? When you're evaluating maybe 50% costs coming in less than what you anticipated, is profit?
It is profit, so, that's right, so.
So there seems to be already the cost of the new paragraph 33 and what is set at 32. And I, I have no objection to any excess going into the project in the way of repairing, uh, repaving the streets in the future, you know, putting into the development.
Right, this, this is essentially saying that we are going to finish sources what people use this in. So, um, we will not have above, we will have excess fee.
Well, as, as Vinae, I think, mentioned, we had already put that in, that the fee was capped at 15.
Agreed, agreed.
So.
And the state isn't going to approve higher than 15%.
Right, so there is no shared savings. Any savings reverts back to either the project. We had already written in that it reverts to you, your organization?
If over 15%.
Over 15%.
Yeah.
If it was profit over 15%.
Well, as Kevin said, any savings is profit.
Right, so I guess, I guess, so the way we have it written right now, the housing authority doesn't receive any benefit from project savings at the end of the day. It's all gone back into the project, right? So that does eliminate your dream.
Well, but your dream will be partially fulfilled, because in this project we'll have some ongoing sustainability, so I don't think you're going to wake up in a cold sweat.
From, from, yes, but, you know, the savings, you're going to be putting into some kind of reserve for, I guess.
The association or.
For the association, um, to put in a communal gardens. I would rather see the money go towards the repair of the surrounding public housing that has been scarce recently.
I don't have a, a firm feel on this one, so it's.
I'm not sure who makes that decision.
Well, the way.
If it were to, if it were to improve the surrounding housing, then it would have to be, then some, the fee would have to come to housing.
I guess I'm just questioning that.
Do we need condition 33?
Very determined the profit that you're putting savings into now a capital improvement reserve, which is nothing wrong with that, it's ideal, but it's money.
Well, do we need condition 33, I think is the question, if it's already been stated that, you know, excess profit.
We just added.
We decided at the meeting, yeah.
Part of the fee conversation.
What do you think, Ed?
You guys discussed it earlier today.
Okay.
Again, I hadn't thought about the housing authority. I thought it was still worth having in there. And I hadn't thought about it until Kevin had mentioned in terms of the split, that half goes back to the state and half goes to the developer. We've got the ultimate cap, I mean, if in fact, uh, profits exceed 15%, which I think is probably not likely, the housing authority does share in that. I just, you know, I know that additional landscaping always helps projects or reserves when you've got 100% affordable units here at different levels. So I, does it hurt to have it in there?
Well, I guess the question is, is it in contravention to the other condition that the housing authority gets the excess profit? Because that's what savings would be, in essence, wouldn't it?
So, and.
That's true.
So if we think about it, if we have hit the comprehensive permit, essentially that's going to override the state's half.
Half of it, yeah. I think they're only entitled to profits, profits if it kicks, kicks it above 15%.
That's right. And so the only way that would be accomplished is if we had adequate cost savings.
You could have $100,000 of savings and the actual profit is only 12%.
That's right.
So I don't think it's.
Okay.
Take money off of.
Let's leave it in then.
Able.
Okay, you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we're going to leave it in. Okay, so I think those are all the points that needed discussing. So now we seem to either.
We have to see whether it's draft or not?
You know, there were enough changes where, you know, that, that we definitely want to see it before a final, final situation, but.
Michael's not going to be here next month, right?
Okay, maybe we can go it then and, what do you think, Leslie? Can we vote this and then, subject to final approval, or Ed, both of you, uh, final approval of the revised document? Yeah, okay. How does everybody feel about taking a vote, subject to? And, and just to be totally clear for me, I can get that, or Eleanor or the plus can get that document, send it to all the board members, and can we not only weigh in, but are we allowed to discuss it if there's something we don't like, for some bizarre reason, by the way? Or is that a violation? Leslie?
I would suggest that if you want to vote it today, vote, you know, subject to the changes that were discussed at the meeting today, we'll finalize those with their team, distribute it to the board, and if you have comments, send them to us individually. And if it's something substantive that there's a real disagreement on, then we can put it back on the agenda for next meeting.
Okay. Again, I, I couldn't hear you, Leslie, but the vote would be, vote to approve the modification subject to the changes discussed at today's session. Then you'll get a revised draft, everybody, distribute it, everybody will review it. And it seems to me, maybe Leslie could be, is there any problem with individual board members contacting Leslie?
No, that, that was her suggestion, but, but you couldn't hear.
And Leslie, if she has questions, we'll give you a call, I assume, or give me a call. And, uh, I think that should do it.
Okay.
Ed, one question. We'll get a copy of this.
Yeah.
Is Ed Marchand still fully funded, I mean.
Oh, yeah, that, that is the other issue. Ed is, uh, has, I believe.
I'm at the end of the five, I was at the end of the 5,000 I mentioned to Kevin. I think it's going to be another 1,500.
All right, so we just would like you to agree to fund that.
Yep.
So we got a nod of the head and yes, so. Okay, thanks, Mark. Okay, so we're good on that. So can I get a motion to, you know, approve, subject to approval of the revised amendment one?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Lisa makes the motion, you want a second one? Okay, Lisa makes the motion, who wants to second that one? Michael seconded. Is there any further discussion on it? Is there anybody in the audience who wanted to talk about this?
No.
Surprising. Okay, so no further discussion?
I just ask a question, should, should that be the vote or should it be approval of project subject to the changes as discussed at today's meeting? If you say it's subject to the approval of the modification, then do you have to have another?
Yeah.
How do you know whether or not that's approved?
I, I'm easy, so I'm going to, I'm going to defer to you, Ed, you've done this more than I have, so.
I would say a vote to approve the modifications as, as discussed, approve the modifications subject to the changes agreed upon at today's hearing, at today's meeting.
Agreed upon.
What does Andrew say?
That, that works, I agree with that.
Okay.
Want to amend your motion?
Sure.
So you amend your motion to reflect what Ed Marshaun said?
And I'll second that.
Okay, so now is there any further discussion? No? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All righty.
Just a point of information, I just want to let everybody know that, I think we told you last time we submitted our preliminary application, since then we have been invited into the next round. I don't know how many others there are, but that puts us in, you know, pretty high probability territory. So we did cross that first.
When, when is the next round?
Our application goes in April thirtieth, end of this month. We expect that we'll hear back by the end of June.
Okay.
So we'd like to be able to submit a letter to you for approval, hopefully, you know, sometime in March.
So no infrastructure would really take place until August?
No, that's roughly the time of the letter. When you approve that letter, we would then start to get.
Okay, all righty, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you, Ed, thank you.
Hi, Ed.
Okay, moving on. I just got to find. All right, so now we are at, you ready?
Yeah.
Twenty-three dash thirteen, Bridget Blah, Blah, Blais?
Blais.
Smith wants to withdraw without prejudice. The voting members are myself, Michael Omerick, Hiram, Mark Boer, Lisa Bocelli.
Can we do it without Mark in the room?
What's that?
Mark just left, but we can still do it.
I think so.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Okay, Lisa's made the motion, is there a second? Michael seconded it, and nobody wants to talk about this, I presume? No? Any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's get rid of all of the withdrawals right now.
Well, can you add, Sarah, forty-seven Monomoy Road to your list of the, that is oh-six-four dash thirteen.
Okay, withdrawal, okay, so oh-four, I mean, oh-six-four dash thirteen, forty-seven Monomoy Road would like to withdraw without prejudice. That was never opened, so this story is good. It was a pleasure to the board.
For that, only that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, just going to do them one at a time.
Okay.
Okay, so Hiram seconded it, no, any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye. Aye, okay. So the next one was eighty-six dash thirteen, Rebecca Mosinger, forty-five Surfside Road would also like to withdraw without prejudice.
I'll make the motion again.
Lisa makes the motion, Hiram seconded it, any further discussion? No, anybody in the audience? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then the last one, which isn't on the printed agenda, but they want, no, no, this is, I'm sorry, this one, well, it's not a withdrawal, so I guess we're good. So we are now back to.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, what are you doing with bookworks? Have you already withdrawn that without prejudice, that's on that list?
Right, that's under new business.
It's not bolded, so I did not see it, but, all right, we'll get to that right this moment.
Okay, eighteen dash fourteen, can you, can I?
Yeah, I got it.
I'd like to request that as part of the motion, you indicate that the reason it's being withdrawn is that the relief is no longer necessary due to the changes in activity in two thousand and twenty.
Do we have to do that? I mean, are we then attesting to that fact? I mean, I don't, I presume it's correct, I presume you're, why, why do we need to do that?
Why do we need to do that, though?
It seems like a.
It would just be helpful, and that's all, because I know when I get over to the building department, they'll be, you know, some of that stuff.
Okay, well, I have to, I have to admit, I was unable to attend, so.
That's why, just withdraw without prejudice and.
Yeah, I feel a little more comfortable. I'm sure the building department is going to believe you. Eighteen dash fourteen, Wendy M. Hudson, trustee of J.J. M. Nami Trust, they'd like to withdraw without prejudice.
What's that?
Eighteen dash fourteen, twenty-five Broad Street, Hudson. So, what do you think?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Lisa makes the motion again, Hiram seconded it, any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we might as well continue. Seventeen dash fourteen, Andrew T. Pearlman, for Derry Moore Road, is going to be continued, so can, so the voting members were E.T., M.J.O., L.D., Jeff there. So Jeff, you're sitting on this.
Hey.
You don't have to get up. So, are we willing to continue that to the next, to the May, what's the date?
Eight.
May, May.
Yes.
Mr. Omerick won't be here, but.
That wouldn't be sitting.
Oh, that's right, Mr. Omerick won't be sitting. Does it? Well, doesn't matter. Somebody's going to read in and blah, blah, blah. Okay, so any further discussion? Did we make that motion?
I did.
Lisa did. Hiram, you seconded it? You're not sitting, are you?
Not sitting.
Cool. Uh, well, I guess Jeff, will you make that?
Jeff has to second.
Will you second that?
Yes.
All right, so any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there goes the, the house cleaning. So, we are up to, I love it, love it. We are down to nineteen dash fourteen, Oak Hill Investments LLC, South Seven, South Valley Road, for the applicant, esteemed Mr. Bodet.
I'm not sitting, I guess.
Okay, Mr. Omerick's not sitting, so Jeff, are you doing work on that job? Mark, Jeff, somebody's got to sit.
I'm not doing work.
All right, go on up. Do you at all remember who sat on the original?
Definitely Lisa, Susan, Michael, and, no, I didn't.
No? It doesn't matter, just curious, so someone must remember.
Somebody will remember.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Rick Odet for the applicant, property is seven South Valley Road. It's in the loved ones own district. We're seeking amendment to the existing special permit that you granted last summer. As I mentioned, somebody will remember, it's not conforming, as previously not conforming as to lot size, it's about twenty-eight thousand square feet, forty thousand square feet. The original structure on the property was not conforming as to setback, and it's slightly over ground cover, it's seven percent required, and I think it's seven point nine percent, it's basically over by forty square feet. The prior application that we submitted and that you approved eventually was, it allowed us to demolish all the structures on the property and allowed us to maintain the existing ground cover of nineteen hundred forty-three square feet. That approval had housed of seventeen hundred forty-three square feet and a garage of two hundred square feet to get up to nineteen forty-three. Also have shed and pool in the site plan. The reason we're here today is essentially just to amend the site plan. The change to the structures on the property, again, to keep the same exact ground cover of the previous nineteen hundred forty-three square feet. The change is, would be a sixteen hundred sixty-nine square foot lawn, two hundred forty square feet garage, and a thirty-nine square foot outhouse.
Says thirty.
The pool and shed will be there. So again, we're just shifting around the structures here, we don't, we're not adding any ground cover, essentially the same, we're held up at the building department because we can't, we can't move forward with the next phase, which is garage, until we get it.
Okay, I think it, the application says a thirty-three foot outhouse, not that that's a huge deal, but.
That's what it is on the site plan, too.
Yeah, I think, I think you just misspoke.
I misspoke.
Is that an outhouse in the traditional sense of the word outhouse?
Yeah, it is, I mean, when I first saw it, I thought.
Oh, it's a bathroom out there, yeah, it's a bathroom, because they can't put the, they can't put the bathroom in the shed, the zoning shed.
Right.
So, so the people can go to the bathroom and the pool.
Why don't you go in the pool?
Remember, we were being filmed and taped.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We're live.
Okay, anyway, that last one got, no. What do, what do we think?
I don't have a problem with this.
It's basically just a reallocation, we're good? Any comments from the neighborhood? There was, were some. Anybody from the audience? No. Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I'm making too many motions, I'm going to tell somebody else.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second to that?
I'll second, Susan.
Susan seconded it. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so the next one's, oops, next one's continued, um, all right, I didn't see the second page.
No, you thought weird.
Twenty-one dash fourteen, Hingham Institution for Savings, thirty-five Main Street, the esteemed Mr. Linden.
Thank you, sir, Richard Linden on behalf of the applicant, requesting a modification of decision oh-four thirteen, against the application also to the extent necessary special permit we need in order to alter pre-existing non-conformal structure by changing the use of the third floor from office to residential. You may remember, we came in and got permission, we got a waiver of eleven parking spaces in the building around it. We're here because the locust is non-comformant, it's a spec, frontage, it's got twenty-three feet and thirty-five foot district, it's also non-comforming, we have setback on the port side of the five, for the yard line, but everything predates, the standard predates zoning, and therefore considered pre-existing non-comformant. It's also non-comformant, it's parking, we're going to waive the parking. If we put the, they want, originally the third floor was to be incidental to the banks and uses office space, so if we put it on residential unit up there, there would be two residential units, the building, makes the building duplex. Duplexes are now allowed in the CDT district, so what proposed is allowed use, and Tommy just changed parking to lower, it's okay with duplex parking requirements here, so we're lessening the parking requirement, which you are the way, and it's allowed, it's allowed use, so, you know, our position is that the change from office to residential will not be substantial or attached to the neighborhood, and those duplexes, and how many of the purpose intent by law, because it's allowed use in this zone, pretty straightforward.
Okay.
So the plans that are in the packet don't reflect the top floor going to residential, this is just what was approved previously, nothing that matters?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just.
But it is a separate unit.
Absolutely.
Right, because there's already a unit on the second floor.
Right.
Okay.
Not that I care.
Absolutely.
I wonder how you get a second means of egress from up there? Neither here nor there.
Not my job, so.
Obviously, we would not, you know.
You're not waving a building over for.
No, we would, we would like to, but.
I wonder if they can use that, they can, might be able to use that corridor on the second floor and go on the backs, the exterior stairs, but, anyway.
Anyway, what's everybody's feeling on this one? Office to residential, it's, it's an approved use? Okay, anybody in the audience want to talk about this? No? Okay, so will somebody make a motion?
Make that motion.
To approve as requested?
Correct.
All righty, is there a second?
I'll second.
Susan seconded. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mark, listen.
Sir.
Uh, okay, twenty-two dash fourteen, you, you ready, Mark?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-two dash fourteen, Hughes Subsystem Inc., twelve Spearhead Road, for the applicant.
For the applicant, Joseph Gads, Mr. Chairman, with me is George Hughes, chief board owner of Hughes Subsystem. If I could refresh the board memory, before this board actually July, at that time we obtained the special permit, this is a lot that's located, often major commercial zones, subdivision, I suspect since that time you, the board has presented with other applications for me for zoning relief. The lots within that development were subject to a zoning freeze, RC two, the relief requested back in July, the modification requested today of the relief that was granted in July is interior, exterior storage, warehousing, which under RC two still requires zoning relief, that's why we're before the board. Right now that guy is on commercial industrial, it does not require zoning relief. That's by way of background, back in July, the request was made based for the relief, which was granted based upon a site plan that was prepared for a commercial building to be constructed, it also had requested for two parking spaces as well as a loading area and the requisite twenty percent open space. The board granted that relief in July, subject to certain conditions, we're before the board now because the, the, the schedule of moving forward is, with the construction of the building is moving, is, is on a fast track, and it, what is now being proposed by the board under this modification is for strictly interior storage. On the previous application, it dealt with exterior storage of portable toilets, now the intent is to have interior storage of all portable toilets, as well as any supplies and materials and equipment related to the storage of those toilets. The new site plan shows a designation for the open space, shows a designation for the actual building that's going to be constructed, which is presently upstairs in front of the HTC for approval, and it, it also shows the two parking areas. I believe in your packet, you, and you see the copy of the site plan, I have a larger version for visually if it's necessary, but it also provided for the, the sighting of the building, the open space, the loading zone, and the two parking spaces. One difference, another difference from the previous application is the applicant's proposing to put up a, a chain link fence as opposed to hedging, which has been approved previously. The reason being is that I believe there are other commercial industrial uses out there that are using chain link fences, but most importantly is now the applicant seeking in this modification strictly interior storage. Before, I think the hedging was a better screener, screening buffer for exterior storage of portable toilets. Everything is going to be stored within the building itself now, so the applicant's seeking to, to put up a chain fence on three sides of the lot with a minimum height of six feet. height of six feet. Does anything prove it?
Okay. Um, let me just, what do we think? Any questions? We, we had approved it with a hedge before, but...
Is chain defense approvable? I guess it was.
I mean, the HTC has to approve the fence.
Right.
There is.
We can approve the substitution of a chain link fence, but the HTC has to approve the material, and I don't know why they wouldn't there if other chain link fences...
Are approved.
Are, are approved.
I'm just curious.
There are chain link fences out there.
Right.
Right.
Um, it's not super attractive, but what the heck, it's, it is what it is.
Better to have everything stored inside than...
Yeah.
The outdoor storage in this application.
It's going to take an improvement.
Um, okay. Carol, you have any comment?
Just straight forward.
Susan, you good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, any other conditions? I mean, are all of the conditions changing? So, I mean, I...
Well, the site plan changed, so location wise, uh, the building itself changed, it's enlarged, uh, for purposes of storage now, and the exterior storage space area is now enveloped within the, the building itself. But the, the loading zone, you know, the prescribed loading zone area, it would be located, but it's the same size, the two parking areas relocated, but the same size, and the fence being...
I guess what I'm getting is, do we need to refer back to the old decision at all in terms of the other conditions?
I do not believe so.
I don't, A was hedge.
Are we issuing a new special permit for the property? As opposed to a modification?
It says a modification, so I just want to be clear that...
It's still a relief underneath, uh, that, uh, one thirty-nine thirty as far as interior slash exterior, so to the extent of piggybacking on the previous special permit, it's a modification of what had already been approved, has been allowed use.
I, I, I know, and I, I don't think anybody has a problem with it, I just want to make sure we do it properly. Do we want to...
Did the reference, any drawing layout?
Just reference the new site plan, don't, and the other conditions that we imposed in the last special permit...
Go away.
Go away, I guess.
Well, other than the...
I just want, I know, it's really up to you.
I believe that's it. Then, it, what is set forth in the request to relieve to be a substitution for the conditions, the previous conditions.
And the, yeah, and the site plan.
Which always is the site plan.
Okay.
And there's no hours of operation or anything, right?
No.
I didn't see that.
We don't do that out there.
Okay.
Mark, you good with this?
I'm very good with it.
So, so the, the, you know, we have the hedge has to be planted within blah, blah, blah.
But that's going to be gone because it's going to do chain link now.
But don't we say that, so should we say the chain link fence should be installed within the one year, or do we...
I did put, great thing to read, the request to relieve, everything to be performed, construction and the chain link fence within eighteen months, but it's going to move on a much faster track, so construction should be sorry.
You okay with that, Susan?
Yeah.
And, and I guess the only sort of condition that would remain from the old would be E, the locus shall maintain a minimum of twenty percent of open area. Right?
Right, although that is stipulated on the site plan.
Right.
So, I don't know if it has to be mentioned again.
All right, I'm good with it. Uh, so who wants to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to grant the relief.
As requested, okay.
With the site plan and the exhibit.
Okay.
You said this was up in front of the HTC now?
Okay. Somebody want to second that?
Will second.
Carol seconds it. Any further discussion? No. Anybody in the audience on this one? No. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm not gonna...
I'm going to take a party.
I'm not gonna sit on the next one. No, the next, where the hell are we? Yeah, I'm not gonna sit on the next one.
Oh, no, not this one.
Do you need me to sit?
I don't know.
On that one?
You cannot chair it, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay, so, and then I'll go for the next one, go take a break. Okay. It's okay.
We continue on one?
Yep. Okay. That's a different one. Okay, this is application twenty-three dash fourteen, thirty-four Montomory Road, LLC for the applicant.
Karen Hamlin for the applicant, thirty-four Montomory Road, LLC. We're requesting a special permit in order to remove a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling with a garage from a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and to replace it with a new dwelling and a garage. Uh, the existing property is twelve thousand fifty, about twelve-five square feet, and the district requires forty thousand square feet. The existing setback non-conformities are about twenty feet, and the district requires thirty-five. There is a side yard setback non-conforming, and the closest is ninety feet, and the ground cover is twenty-three percent, and the district, where the total ground cover is...
Seven.
Seven, thank you. Um, I'm not sure if somebody familiar with this property, it's the old Go-Ach house. The existing foundation that's underneath it, uh, is failing, and it can't support any renovations that my client was proposing to do to it. Uh, the prior owner has indicated that he'd be willing to take the house and put it somewhere else on a different foundation, which seemed the best of both worlds to all of us, to get it out of there, um, and it would be less disruptive in the neighborhood. So, what we're proposing is a new house that would reduce the ground coverage down from twenty-three to, I think it's twenty-point-one percent. We'd be eliminating the side yard setback non-conformities altogether, and the front yard setbacks would be essentially pretty much the same. They would not be any closer than what's there now.
Looks like you're using the same footprint, is that?
We're trying to use the same footprint, yeah.
Even though, even though you're...
Because it's been there so long, we're trying to...
But you're using a new, you would be putting new foundation.
We're definitely using a new foundation.
Okay, so it is shifting.
We have to have a new foundation. It's moving over a little bit, but it's pretty much going to be the same. The only thing, there's a, I think there's a wart that sticks out here.
Yeah, that you're removing.
That we're removing.
So, you essentially need relief from the front yard setback and the...
We need, well, we need a special permit to replace it, right?
Right.
And because in the, the front yard setback, we would, we plan to build substantially in accordance with the proposed conditions plan. HTC is tweaking it a little bit. It's not going to get bigger, it might actually get a little bit smaller, so I would, you know, I'm happy to attach that plan, but we built substantially non-conformally, but setbacks aren't going to change at all, but ground cover may actually come down, but maybe tend to be.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't want there to be an issue of markets when you see that kind of building.
I'm sorry, is this...
If he even notices it.
Is this variance release or special permit release?
Special permit release.
Even though the building's coming down?
Okay, under the law, we're allowed to do that, and under the ATM article that was approved, we're still allowed, so.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any questions on the board? Does anybody in the audience here to speak for thirty-four Montomory?
Please move me.
Is that a motion?
Make a motion if possible.
Any, no conditions?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay.
One more.
Was there a second? There's been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Your second.
Thanks. Is anyone coming back? Are you, you coming back on?
Yeah.
I don't know. Are you taking a break?
I'll sell.
Okay, so I guess...
All right, we may have a problem with this, twenty-four fourteen?
I just began to wonder recently that the, uh, my, one of my clients, who's the director of water at, uh, three raised court, is not on the water's list. Uh, eight raised court, I'm sorry, is absolutely the director of water, he's, this is the subject of property.
Right.
This is him, and he's not, he's been dropped from the list.
So, he wasn't known?
No, he's, Mr. Barnes had called him and notified him, but he was not being received in a professional manner.
Okay, so where does that leave us?
Well, I mean, obviously, I just have the list from the, that's right.
Right.
He's your client, objecting or is he acknowledging actual notice?
He's objecting and asking that we, we notice and drop him.
Seems like we have no choice.
I don't like it, but I don't really have any choice.
I don't, I don't like it either, Susan, but I don't think we have any choice.
I think the assessor's office needs to clean up, because this list and the HTC list are wrong.
Yeah, right.
It's not, it's not the applicant's fault.
No. It's literally no one from eight raised court, I mean, not, it's not just that it changed ownership, it's just no, no eight raised court.
No, no eight raised court.
It's not even, it's not even, it goes, um, one, two, five, nine.
So, other people may not have been noticed as well?
Well, I haven't gone through the whole thing. It's possible that there are other people who did it, this is noticed as well, that's what I, I...
Well, that's, that's possible in any application, if they don't, can't get there.
Your client could, except, you're, he's represented by counsel, and he has previous notice, could waive it.
Not currently.
Okay.
Okay, our, lightening our load.
So...
So, is that even, do we even open it?
I, I would say we don't open it, because Mr. O'Meara's not...
We didn't, right? I was just saying, we didn't even open it.
No, no.
I will check with the assessor, and, um, you can direct the staff to put it in the next report.
I can do that. Okay, I'm not gonna sit on the next one.
Okay.
And that's the final one, but I'll stick around.
Is this, uh, Barnes?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Should we continue the...
No, that, that one's on, that one's on, I'm sorry.
Like, I can't... The mouse don't work.
Mr. O'Meara.
Did we take something?
This morning.
This is the old one.
Okay, all right, got it.
Who's representing the applicant? For twenty-five fourteen? Okay. Next application is twenty-five fourteen, excuse me, twenty, twenty-five fourteen, Maxberry Trustee of the Berry Revocable Trust, fifteen Washington Street, representing the applicant.
I'm Jason Bridges, I'm the, um, technically Maxberry's applicant, I'm the, I'll be the tenant.
Could you just give your address?
Uh, one, one Dennis Street.
Thank you.
Um, seeking the, uh, the maintenance and the restriction alleviated.
Do you have a large plan that we can look at of this project? Is there a plan?
Yeah, hold on, I was trying to find the page.
I just wanted to see the layout.
Yeah.
It's very interior, quite, right? Okay. All right. I just want to see if there was any screening, landscaping, or any other features that were being shown on the, on the plan.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much all I see, that's the whole property.
Okay. Thank you.
This is a little commercial store, isn't it?
Right now, it's retail.
Retail, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm asking to take the restriction off, and after that, if there's no food in the alcohol, and the premises, so I can start a coffee shop.
With alcohol?
No.
Oh, okay. Just...
If you wanted to keep the liquor...
Gotcha, I, I understand.
It's really just the food, but I don't know if you have to take a little restriction off, or you can amend it, this is where I'm not really sure how that works.
Okay, so, um, currently retail, you'd like to turn it into a, a coffee shop, any sitting?
Yeah, new sitting.
Okay. How many seats?
Um, it'll be under twenty-five.
Under twenty-five.
There'll be a couple benches outside, but that kind of seating is open.
Parking stays?
Uh, everything, nothing's really changing with the parking.
Okay.
I think they have one spot there, that was used before.
Takeout?
Uh, takeout in the sense of, uh, nothing will be prepared on premises.
No, just personal service, people walking in, going up to a counter, ordering stuff, taking it out?
Yes, yes. Grab, grab and go.
Yeah, oh, you need five seats, uh, or five parkings, is it, five parking space, spaces for takeout?
Leslie knows the answer to that, all right.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, for this particular application, there were quite a few changes at town meeting that were just approved that would affect the way you may normally review this type of application. Article sixty-two waived all parking requirements for the commercial downtown zoning district, and waived all loading requirements as well. The uses that he's proposing are all allowed by right, there's no parking requirement, there's no loading requirement, so the only issue before the board today is the modification...
Great.
Of that previous decision to remove the restaurant restriction, and that was, um, subject to a private deed restriction and has since expired, and is no longer enforceable.
Excellent, got it.
Okay.
Good to know.
Any other questions from board members?
No outside seating?
I think there was.
Oh, in the ba, in that little patio back there, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's really obscure.
But, um, you're looking at more, more of the bench setting up for, because the bus station's right across.
Right, right. Maybe with this property.
What are your proposed hours of operation?
Um, I'm looking for coffee shops usually at six thirty, seven in the morning, I don't want to be up in the middle. And then, it's, um, I'd like to turn to the open until eight, just for the coffee shop, just because, looking at when the dreamland lets out, the last bus is coming in, that only do for the summer.
Oh, Maxberry.
Probably would like to, we'll close at six, but like to run through, get some coffee.
Mm-hmm. Oh, good, okay.
At that point, we, 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 we're, that kind of got to, it could be more breakfast and lunch, grab and go, and nine is the place to, you know, catch a wine by, and have some coffee.
And you want to stay open as long as the bus station stays open?
No, I think they're, in the summer, they're, their last, I think, they're eleven, I guess, I, I don't want to... I grew up in the restaurant business, I don't want to do the late night thing again.
Okay.
But if you did change, you know, in the July and August, it sort of demands to be able to, maybe I'd like to have that, but I personally don't want to do it.
Okay. Any other questions? Anyone in the audience care to comment on this application? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I am here representing the American Legion Hall at twenty-one Washington Street, um, and if I may read a quick letter into the record, and then I will submit it to Bellamark, if I, I didn't get the letter from yesterday, so. Your board members, we ask that you vote against this proposal for following reasons. The parking situation, as the town of Danzig searches for parking solutions, it's for fair grounds, approving this request is counterintuitive to the downtown parking challenge that we face as a community. Two, pedestrian congestion, this locale is a very heavily trafficked area, within a one-block area of Washington Street, there are many businesses that are in close proximity to each other. There are the American Legion Hall, the Lobster Trap Restaurant, the NRTA, several galleries and a furniture store. Any increase in parking from another business in this highly congested area would cause undue financial hardship on all existing businesses within this one-block area. Three, safety, this proposed site is in the main thoroughfare in and out of downtown area for all wheel and pedestrian traffic, any increase in the area's traffic, especially as concerns being the terminus for the bike tours, could lead to grave consequences that impact both lives and properties, this is a major public safety concern. Thank you for your consideration on behalf of the members of the Byron Elsso Varo American Legion Post eighty-two, my signature this day.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on this application?
I just, I just want to know more about the terminus of the, of the bike tour, I mean, is this going to be a congested area with lots of bikes coming and going from this site, is this a beginning and end of a tour component?
Go ahead.
Uh, no, right now, we have, we start at thirty-one Washington Street, just down, down the road, so bigger tours, we start at George Beach, or we start in the property, this would be more for our smaller groups who want to end our tours there, so to use that kind of cross promotions of the bike tours and.
And where do you plan on offloading and storing these bikes as part of your, part of the congestion concerns that the American Legion has?
We're not going to store the bikes here, we're going to stack them in the back, just for the day, and then we take them down to our spot on Washington Street, so it's just, as they roll in, they're ending here, oh, we'd like to pop them to the lotter, put the bikes back here temporarily, and then we put them back down to our starting position.
Okay, do you bring a truck up and load the truck out in front of the premises to take your bikes back down, or are they?
Be at one, be at one parking space, that's where our truck will be.
Okay.
But it'll be at one time, one day a thing, it's not, you're not going to see, I can imagine, you know, having thirty bikes rolling into that area.
Right, that's, that was my concern, I, I could see blocking that sidewalk and causing all sorts of turmoil down there with that kind of activity going on.
The reason we like this space is because there's this area here that's not right on the sidewalk, where people can come in, get off their bikes, and roll them in, and we're only, we're only a bike service, we're three of us.
Hop on the bus.
So you're not going to be renting bicycles at that location?
My insurance will triple, and that's not our thing, we just do tools.
Okay, uh, does the board want to have a discussion on the hours?
Yeah, I'm seeing reasonable to me.
Which hours?
Well, at that, the six-thirty in the morning, or whatever it is, till eight o'clock at night, I mean, there's so much activity down there at that location at that time, I don't see that as being unreasonable, with, with all the bike, I mean, the bus traffic and things going on there.
Does it matter that the addendum says seven? Does that cost?
I think we could suggest that, didn't last year, didn't we approve a coffee shop right across from Force Five on the bottom of Washington Street that was never, um, never permitted, and in other words, it never went through with that, it was a, it was a shoe store?
Yeah, yep.
I don't remember, Leslie?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, there was a coffee shop approved there, and I would again note the difference between then and now, is there were all kinds of special permits in play that town meeting has now voted to say that's allowed by right, so I would discourage the board from putting any conditions on the hours of operation, because the use has been voted by town meeting as by right, the commercial downtown district has been extended into that area where it did not exist when that condition was placed on the permit in nineteen ninety.
So he's offered, in his application, seven to eight, Mark suggested six-thirty to eight.
Well, and Leslie's saying, but it's a right by, a matter of right, the use, so why condition it at all? If the downtown, the Chamber of Commerce says, we want shops to be open from five o'clock in the morning till eleven o'clock at night, if they can, why condition?
I think.
That's fine, except there's a guest house two doors away, so.
Well, is, my, my understanding is that this addendum is put together before town meeting, before those items are passed, and if they weren't passed, then we would be considering all of this, and I get the concerns of the guest house, or, and the American Legion, but if it's allowed by right, I don't, it's not sort of unfair for us to.
If there's no deed restriction, why does it even have to be here?
Because the board at the time discussed the deed restriction and carried it into their decision.
Okay.
So it would, it wasn't needed at the time either, it was a use that was allowed by right.
Okay, any further discussion? It's the pleasure of the board.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve, so what would be approved, just the change of use, or modification of the special?
You would modify the previous decision to remove the restriction on restaurant use.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, thank you.
All these sounding changes, I could see this one being practiced.
Okay, anyway, uh, where are we, twenty-six dash fourteen, Andrew C. Tenny, Jennifer Tenny, sixteen A Milestone Road, for the applicant, hold on one sec, uh, okay, so we got five, go ahead, rock and roll, tell us who you are for the tape.
Michael Sweeney, um, I apologize, my council, I don't know everything, I just had a rule come through three hours ago, but the agent was supposed to be here as well, but I have research from the bug, and I think, I think I can answer.
Appeal, give it a shot, if you want. So what you want to do then is explain to us what you want to do, or you're, the applicant wants to do.
Okay, so basically, they've got an existing deck on the back of their cottage in Mon Amal Village, and they're asking to convert that into a covered porch.
Screened covered porch, or just covered?
Screened covered porch.
And the issue is that the, the deck currently, or the, or the step is in the setback, or the deck?
Well, there's a number of issues, the first issue, the step is in the setback, um, they're proposing to move that around to the side, where they're going to have to relocate a door, so that would resolve that issue, uh, the other issue is that the Mon Amal Village itself is pre-existing non-conforming oversights on the ground cover, and, uh, basically, this would be adding additional.
Coverage, since it's a screen porch. So can I just ask a question before we get too far into this, so did, did, did you get the?
I thought it was screened, it didn't count.
I did.
You put the screens in, it counts?
Yes, your updated step report reflects that.
Okay. Uh-oh, I guess I have the.
No, I just thought.
Screened porches have always counted.
In the, in the packet, the updated step report does reflect.
I'm not saying it makes sense.
This is mine, it's in the packet.
Where's the step, I don't, to the step, where's the step showing?
Over the step line.
There is a little step there, I can't.
What was that?
Showing up, okay, so, so that's over the step line.
There is another plan.
Oh, yeah.
Right here.
Like a ten-foot. Oh, I got it, yeah, I do have that plan, okay.
So the deck will then conform to the ten feet?
Correct.
Correct?
And then the only other issue is the entire subdivision, because it's looked at as one's, one neighborhood, is over the ground coverage.
Yes, uh, they did get approval from, honestly, from all the other condo owners, that everyone was okay with what they were attempting to do as far as taking out extra ground cover and the children's affairs, and, uh, and the Elsso Hoppers just to, to, to.
I didn't see it. Do we have that approval, uh, letter from the condo association, I didn't see it.
It's in the package, there it is, it's a bunch of emails.
I got a little lost in the, I don't remember seeing it, but it doesn't, okay.
Here they are, they're in the back. Yep, let's see them.
Oh, I, so you didn't get a, there is no approval from the condo association, there's just these, these random, not random, but each person?
Yeah, I think they included the, the deeds of the, um, association, there also which says that they require sixty-seven percent approval, uh, and all of those homeowners' letters are in here? Yeah, they're in the package.
Well, there are these emails that.
That's, that's good enough.
So I just have a question, I, I, it doesn't, I'm just curious, what happens as they continue to get over and over on the ground coverage, you know, let's say this guy wants, the Maticat now wants to close his deck, what, you know, at what point does the ground cover?
Well, that's why they're here, I mean, we, I guess, are the arbiters of that point.
Right, I mean, it could just be at some point that, um.
Yeah, it's a logic question.
Well, not, not necessarily from our perspective, I just wonder from a condo perspective, because I know you used to own something in there, um, this back one, right?
Yeah, uh, this one.
This one, okay, because I remember you were here for something.
Yes.
Yeah.
I was, I was jailing a deck or the Mon Amal Deck.
Got it.
These guys have the deck.
Right.
Uh, so the ground cover is essentially taken up, or at least theirs, um, okay, just my cover.
Right. Right, and the addition of the screens is what causes it to be ground cover, as opposed to just a covered deck.
Hmm.
I was only asking from the perspective of the condo association, I wonder, you know, at one, at any point if that comes into play, but I don't have a.
Well, it only becomes a point if, if some other member comes here and we say no.
Right.
They were all notified.
Right.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with it, I was just curious.
Well, I mean, it is arguable, and when you have, you're already, you know, eighty percent over what you're allowed, I guess, you've gone from ten to eight point, eighteen point five, um, you know, at what point do you say no, I don't know, is this the point? What do you think?
Well, I'm trying to.
I mean.
Think back, like, didn't we on Bodett's, not this time, but when he was before us with that, the same property, and wanting to increase, like, didn't we have this whole discussion about?
On this one, this property?
No, 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 I'm talking about a different property, but didn't we have this whole discussion about, you know, wanting to, to, like, increase an already.
Right.
Non-conforming ground cover, I feel like we held a line with that.
I think you're right, I mean, typically, we, we do hold the line on the ground cover, Leslie?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, two things, um, in preparation of the warrant for the mayor's town meeting, um, the warrant was already published, and I was going through the planning board motions with town council, and it was brought to my attention that although our bylaw does not specify it, and it should, but it was too late at that point, that increases in pre-existing non-conforming ground cover can be granted by special permit, so the variance finding doesn't have to be met. And then the second thing, with this particular application, the deck is already there, simply enclosing it, it, to me, seems a little less, a little lower threshold than if they were, you know, constructing a new room, or an addition, or something like that, it's partially in existence already.
Yeah, my problem with that particular argument is if I want to, you know, if I'm a forward thinker, and I put my deck on this year, and I come back next year, and say, oh, now I want to enclose, oh, it was there, so I don't, I don't necessarily buy that one.
The idea that screen porches are considered coverage is maybe the question.
Right, but I can easily see the screen porch becoming glassed, becoming interior space.
It's probably easier going through a screen and porch than it is, or it's harder to go through a screen and porch than it is from a screen and porch to living space.
Yeah, because you need to heat and everything else.
Yeah, but one, once it's, once it's counted as ground cover, there's no threshold other than money.
You could condition it, I suppose.
No, I, I got no interest in, I, I, I'm simply, I tend to agree with Susan, at a certain point, we, we generally hold the line on ground cover.
I'm not arguing that.
What point are you arguing?
Well, I was arguing, I think Leslie changed the subject matter for a sec, so I was talking about her subject, not Susan's.
Okay, I'm sure I follow, well, anyway, what do we feel about this?
I mean, I don't have a big issue with it, um, you know, because I think it would be approvable without the screens, certainly, without, that, that's right, they could put a roof over it and not have screens, by right, so it, it seems kind of crazy, I mean, that whole screen porch count as ground coverage seems crazy anyway, but.
What about the stairs?
The stairs are moving, he said, outside of the setback, so he's, to net benefit, he's been making that a possibility, he's only destructive.
Yeah, I, I, I would prefer to have never seen the screens, and all of a sudden, oh, decide to throw some screens in my porch, because I just think this is the precursor to the glass, to the heat, to the, to the wood floor, to the, to the bedroom, and the bathroom, but that's just me and my cynicism. So, I, you know, like I said, I think we generally seem to hold fast on the increasing ground cover, but this is a unique situation.
I, I thought that if it was pre-existing non-conforming, it's easy to get more ground coverage, I thought there's that bylaw that.
It's a, it's a special permit?
Yeah, it's easy, yeah, and that it happens, it's, it is routinely approved.
Well, it's routinely approved downtown where there's that crazy bylaw, you can go from thirty to fifty.
No, I thought that, I've been against, I mean, this is maybe before I was on the board, where I now have an argument with Arthur Reed, and depending on which side of the table I sat on, but I thought it was ridiculous that if I was one square foot below the allowable ground coverage, that I couldn't get a special permit to go over it, but if I was one above, I could.
Leslie took care of that.
Well, not really, Article sixty-five, no, yeah, sixty-five, at town meeting, took care of the pre-existing non-conforming lots, under five thousand square feet, going from thirty percent to whatever it is in the district they're located in, but what, if Lisa's referring to, if you're a conforming lot and you're underground cover, you have to get a variance to go over.
Right.
If you're a pre-existing non-conforming lot and you're over ground cover, then you get a special permit to go over it more.
Like, like if something was upzoned.
Um, town council explained to me that there's a lot of case law.
Right, that's what Arthur said, that there is a lot of case law allowing it, so, you know, it's not like this hasn't been approved before, is what I'm saying, I'm arguing that point, even though we might not have done it, I think there were other extenuating circumstances with Rick Bodett's, whereas there was something about a bylaw of combining that ground coverage into one structure.
And that was changed.
And that was changed, yeah, so.
The one that we just heard, Rick Bodett, that one?
Well, the first time he came in.
The first time, yeah.
It was a much larger house, and he was taking the ground coverage from the, and we didn't allow him to do that.
We didn't allow him to increase it, though, it was the same ground cover, it just was reallocated.
Yeah.
There was no increase, that's the point, if they wanted to wipe out all these buildings and build a monster, they could, I wouldn't see a problem with that.
I guess I'm just saying that I guess we didn't do it, we're obviously not consistent, because the other times that we have allowed that to people to increase.
We're not consistent? Another insult.
So is there any, um, I don't know, because this is, this little condominium, and.
There's no neighbors here.
Is this a variance or a special?
Special permit.
There's no neighbors, when there were neighbors, that, the other one, weren't there?
Well, I, I just, I, I guess, what precludes?
I don't know, I don't remember.
Dionys coming in next week and?
As you said, you know, depending on who's sitting, Dionys might not get it.
Oh, well, you gave it to Wisconsin, you gotta give it to Dionys, I, I'm just saying, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know, I'm.
I mean, it seems, it seems de minimis, but it's like, what, sorry, I don't talk over you, but it seems de minimis, but.
Yeah, what point do you say no?
You know, and I don't know, I'm not necessarily against it, I agree with you about the, putting the screens on, it seems, you know, like, that shouldn't be the determining, but I also hear your point, you put screens on, and then you've got the ground cover, and then where do you go from there, so I don't know.
Well, once you get the ground cover, you don't have to come back, I, you know, we could condition it that it never becomes.
Interior space.
Interior space.
Conditioned space.
But the minute they come back in two years, and, you know, Michael's even older and doesn't remember, and I'm.
He's a big fan.
Well.
I'm sure they'd be happy with a conditional, but we'll, but we'll, I guess.
Uh, so I'll make a motion to approve the relief as requested with the condition that the screen porch never becomes interior, um, heated space, or, or cooled space, conditioned space, I guess is what I should be saying.
With windows.
With windows.
Edged space.
Livable?
Yeah.
Livable.
Livable.
Well, uh, you say. Well, is a screen and porch livable?
The other issue here is part of this excess ground cover is the attached shed. So, this doesn't show it, the site plan, but there is a, so let's just be clear here what you're.
That the shed, yeah, right, that this is specific for the screen porch and not the shed becoming, let's see. Where's the attached shed?
Where you look at the floor plan.
It's bedroom, bedroom.
Right there.
I, I talked to the owner, by the way, when I call him the shed, he's probably going to be a stretch for you guys and just happy to give up that.
You mean, just to cut that off?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I thought, I said something, I think the shed being fully enclosed is sort of adding to the size of your house in a different way. So, I think a well shattered is a deal break. He basically wants to be able to have a dinner outdoors then, so I was.
Okay.
So, would you like me to amend my motion to remove the storage shed? Don't you say?
Do whatever you want.
No, I'm going to leave the shed on, I'm comfortable with it. But that, none of that becomes interior living space.
Okay.
With windows.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
All right, anybody in the audience want to talk about this, by the way? No? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Are you, you were aye?
I'll be in favor.
What, we said?
I don't know.
You didn't vote for either one?
No, I said I'll be in favor.
He's just a little blokey, that's all.
I just, you're going so quick, I'm thinking about it.
My bad, I'm sorry. All right, so four to one.
Thank you.
You're good.
You too.
All right, so there was a little bit of other business. Technical amendment to 40B comprehensive permit, ZBA 6600 Abrams Quarry, allowing minor modifications to driveway configurations for 6A Folger Avenue. Do we, whether they went from stacked to side by side or?
Side by side and they want to widen one. Is that what, I think? So, they want to make this one.
I don't know about this again.
I don't know, well.
I don't think so.
Why not?
Well, I mean, they had their little.
No, this is Abrams.
This is Abrams Quarry.
Totally different. Not to sit on, you know.
Is there any reason why you wouldn't allow them to have side by side? That it shouldn't be expanded to be 21 feet wide for parking?
You know, I just remember very, very vaguely that we restricted them to, I don't even remember why. Were you on that, Leslie?
I was not, but there have been other requests similar to this one brought forward to the board over the past, maybe five years. And the board has allowed people to switch from their tandem spaces to side by sides.
So, is this going tandem or are we going, because there's already a side by side parking space. It looks like this one person at 6A wants to widen their parking, parking. So, you'd actually have three, even though the curb cut doesn't change, you'd have three cars wide.
Yeah, well, that's probably.
So, that's different than.
What you wanted to try to avoid was the three car wide.
Well, you were probably trying to avoid the size of the curb cuts, right?
That's what I mean.
So, but that's not going to change. I don't know.
I don't, I don't have a big issue with this.
Do we care about them, like, cutting up their lawn to?
Sort of rudimentary sketch, but I think.
They sketched on this aerial, too.
The aerial. The aerial is a little clearer.
I mean, do we know that if they're parked a car here, they can actually get a car in and back a car out of that nine feet?
Well, the other interesting thing is part of that, their parking appears to be in the road layout quite a bit of it. I don't really care.
As long as the width after the.
What do you mean?
Does he exceed the 24 feet?
But it, but it looks like they're cutting.
But that's everybody, right? It's just because of.
I mean, it's not. Again, it is a rudimentary sketch, but the dotted line is past the curb cut.
No, that's the, oh, that is the lot line. Oh, that might not be right. You know, sometimes the GIS setups aren't terribly accurate.
Okay, anyway.
I don't have a strong opinion, I don't really know.
But that's right, so like, what are they, like, is this, like, this is the lot line?
I think so.
And so, this whole nine foot thing is not on their property?
No, but if you look at the, if you look at the actual plot plan a few pages later, you can see there's quite a bit of area in front of that house to Folger Avenue. So, the GIS just isn't accurate.
Exactly. That's the, oh, he's drawn on his little swath of. See the little?
Anyway, let's put some up.
Mr. Chairman, if the board's in line to approve it, I would just ask that you include some language that the width of the driveway.
At the street?
At the street, not exceed 24 feet.
Right.
Which is what it is now.
That wasn't funded, that was.
There are no.
Well, Michael's made the point, do we need consent from the neighbor? I don't really think so, since they're not changing anything on the neighbor.
But they're adding, they want to add a split rail fence.
She has a enthusiastic neighbor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just discussed these plans, my neighbor, she's enthusiastic about these changes. She will assume the cost. Yeah.
Yeah. And I guess they're going to put a split rail fence down the middle of it? Makes sense. Yeah, all right. So, any further discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Susan?
I said aye.
That's it. All right.
My motion to adjourn?
Yeah. I thought we were, well, we were pretty quick.
We're pretty good.
Mr. Chairman, can we make a quick comment?
Yes.
Articles 64 and 65 were passed in accordance with the planning board motion and those both have a lot of changes that affect the ZBA. So, I would encourage you all to read the motions closely, as well as Article 62, which changes parking requirements and loading requirements and aisle widths and parking configurations and had a lot of cleanup language.
Wasn't 62 contingent upon another article that was?
No, that was, that was the other parking for downtown.
Okay, the other parking, all right.
Can you, can you, is it easy enough to forward us those?
Great.
And if it isn't in plain English, going to be summarized or?
I, they all should be able to understand them, given your status as board of.
All right. But it's not the one where you get the crossed out here, it's the actual approved motion?
The approved motion.
I can handle it.
I couldn't, I couldn't understand that motion for the wine cellar. I mean, it sounds like you can have finished base.
It made no sense to me, but what do I know?
No, I mean, I don't disagree with it, but the way it was worded, it was.
Partially submerged?
Yeah, I didn't understand what that meant.
Partially submerged.
It sounded no clearer than it was before.
Yeah, I think that still has an issue, so.
Just wait, just wait.
Yeah.
It's a great idea to do it, though. I mean, not for finished space, but like to rent mechanicals, it's expensive, so somebody's going to.
For my underground hall, that space.
I don't have ground covers.
Waterproofing for the deck. It's reasonably expensive. It's good for mechanicals, though. To like rent a whole chase down a building that's not finished.
Uh, Michael's second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
For the decision.
So, coming up for the millennial, do I need to go to the office or?
Wow, we're finished?
We're done. Unless they come back with an amendment again.
Well, but then it'll be new.
That'll be, no. Are you going back to the office?
Oh, yeah.
Like, this wasn't the sitting board on it from day one.
Okay, yeah.
We were just lucky.
You were away.
Yeah, but how do I, how does that work?
I just didn't want to get into the situation where you started speaking and then you were.